City Planning Commission meeting is February eighth, two thousand twenty-three. We will start off our meeting with a pledge of allegiance and Mr. South is going to lead us.
Flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Okay, we only have one item on our agenda tonight and it is. A legislative item, which means we're just going to be hearing it to make a recommendation to the municipal council. Am I wrong? You gave me, you gave me the eye of you're wrong.
I was, I was giving her eye on the clicker. You're right.
Okay, so we will be hearing item one tonight to make a recommendation to the municipal council, but before we start with that. We will have all of our commissioners tell us their name and then tell us whether you have any conflicts of interest with this item.
Jeff Whitlock, no conflicts.
Robert Knudsen, no conflicts.
Melissa Kendall, no conflicts.
Andrew South, no conflicts.
And I'm Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Okay. Let me read in item one and then we'll have Mr. Ardmore from the city staff present it to us. David Kang requests ordinance text amendments to section fourteen point three, four point two, five, zero parentheses, three. The standards for conditional uses for dance halls to expand the permitted area. And reduce the distance from one or two family dwellings in the downtown area. This affects the downtown neighborhood, Mr. Ardmore.
Okay, thank you, Plan Commission. So the proposal tonight is to essentially amend the rules. For dance halls or event centers in our downtown area. What I hope to do is kind of. Oh, give a quick overview of the proposal. Explain kind of the reasons behind the proposal, why it's being asked for. Address potential impacts and then. Close on kind of describing why staff has recommended against. This proposal, this, these changes. So you can see on this map in the green area has been highlighted. And that's the area that's referred to in this, this section code fourteen thirty-four, two, five, zero, three, C, seven. This area is, is an exception to what the rules are for dance halls anywhere else in the city. So as you read in your staff report, there's a number of zones that permit a dance hall. As permitted or conditional use throughout the city. And in those zones, if a dance hall is established. It has to be four hundred feet away from a one or two family dwelling, schools, churches, public spaces, things like that. But in the current code, this area in green downtown area. Is an exception to that. It can only, it only has to be two hundred feet back. From those uses, a one or two family dwelling, school, public space. So the request is to alter that. The request, as you can see in the red. Is to expand the area from three hundred west. Along that same north and south, the two hundred north and two hundred south. Expand that one block west, which brings in four additional blocks into that, that, that buffer exception area, if you will. So. The. The addition of those four blocks. Actually brings in approximately twenty-three, one or two family dwellings within those four blocks. The, the reason for this request is the applicant owns property. Here, three eighty-four West Center Street. Okay, so the applicant has found possible tenants. That would like to open up a dance hall there when it was. Introduced to, to the property owner that that wasn't permitted because of these, these rules. This text amendment came through, so. So the, the reason for the, the proposed expansion isn't kind of an overall downtown. We need to expand the areas for event halls idea. It's more of. We have a use that we want to put in this building. That's, that's change the rules to make it happen. So that's, that's the first thing that this proposal does. The second is that. That current two hundred foot buffer that I explained that's currently in the code. They are proposing to reduce that even further to a one hundred foot buffer. And that is because if you look at this property, three hundred, three eighty-four West Center. There are one and two family homes, just three properties north of it. So that two hundred foot buffer is still a little bit too restrictive for that. Building to be used as a, an event center, so the. Expanding the area and reducing the buffer would allow that to occur. Now, as you read in the staff report. We have concerns about the impacts on the neighborhood. Oops, wow, that went fast. Okay, so here you have a, a kind of a, a recent Google imagery of, of the zoomed in on those blocks. Staff has identified the main concern on, on allowing this code amendment. As parking. Let me explain a little bit about that. The parking downtown. Gets a bad rep, I think, as you go towards University Avenue and Center Street, there's a lot of off-street parking. There's a lot of parking garages, there's a lot of opportunity to park. The on-street, center street parking, you have to kind of fight for it, but as you get this far down on the West Center Street. Those. The structured parking. Options are, are pretty limited. If you consider that along with the, the conflicting or the. The, the uses are trying to fight for parking spaces. You've got the Cubby Center for the Arts. Just across the street, you've got the new city hall. Which everybody understands doesn't have enough parking currently. If you've ever come to try to do something in the evening at city hall. And there's something going at the Cubby Center. You're having a tough time finding a spot between those two, a block south, you've got another, another event center, the Blake. Not to mention, you've got a number of retail uses along Center Street. You've got restaurants and, and retail establishments. And then you've got the residences, you've got apartments, you've got one and two family dwellings. So all of those uses kind of within this, this few block area are, are fighting for the same off-street spaces or on-street spaces. So, so let me go into a little bit more detail about why staff is, is recommending denial on this. It is, is mainly because of that parking. The, the, the parking supply issues kind of get exacerbated if you consider what a dance hall typically does, right? So if you, you think about dance halls that are already established in the city. You've got hundred, two hundred people coming out for events. This. Particular building within the area that would be expanded has nineteen off-street parking spaces. In the city code, it. Regulates that dance halls. Are parked at a rate of one space per four occupants. So that, those nineteen spaces would permit about seventy-six occupants for that use if, if this was approved. Staff doesn't feel that's enough. You've got, you've got a pretty big hall there. Hundred to two hundred people coming to any type of event there, I don't think is out of the question. And then you're looking at spillover parking and you're once again competing with those adjacent uses and creating traffic and parking issues. Now, the building itself has, has been improved. Staff's fully in support of, of what's been going on, re, reusing the building. The property owners are currently using our facade, the city's facade grant program to, to fix up the. The front and the west facade of the building. We fully support that. We, we are encouraging that to, to keep happening and, and, and look forward to that being done. We think that that will. On top of the, the good location. Open up the possibility of alternative uses for the building. If you look at the permitted uses in downtown zone. You can almost do anything in the, in the general downtown DT one zone. Retail, restaurant, office, mixed use. There's, there's a lot of options there and I think that's a good property to. To look for some of those options, but because of the parking concerns. Staff just can't recommend approval on this, not only on this particular property would we see issues. But remember that. Within that whole green and red area. That buffer would be reduced from two hundred to one hundred. So that's also expanding. Where event centers could be on the edges of downtown and possibly causing additional conflicts on some of those adjacent neighborhoods. That's all I have prepared. If you have any questions for me, I could try to address those now.
Commissioners, do you have questions for Mr. Ardmore? Mr. Knudsen?
When you were speaking, you were saying that the. They want to request it to go down from two hundred to one hundred feet. Are those two homes that are to the north? Further than one hundred feet or two hundred feet? There's one hundred.
They're further than one hundred feet, but that, that first one is within that two hundred foot buffer and that's, that's the reason for that request.
It talks about on page. Three. About the dance hall operator is responsible for control of noise. There a way the city monitors that, can monitor that if neighbors complain? What, what's the process?
Yeah, so typically a police officer would go out there and have a, a reading, a despicable reading. From the residential property and see if it's gone above the, the limit allowed in the code. Yeah, it's entitled nine of the city code. Yep.
Another question, has the neighborhood had the chance to have a meeting? Or do they do not desire to have a meeting?
I didn't hear anything from the, this was kind of in the transition from the old neighborhood chair program to the district program. But I didn't hear back any, any content or any concerns with, with this particular item.
He's usually very active.
Opportunity.
He was notified.
Any other questions for Mr. Ardmore? I just have a question about the event space that's to the south of the Cubby Center parking lot.
Yeah.
Why don't they have to have off-street parking, but a dance hall does?
You know.
I might be opening a can of worms here, but I just feel like if we're going to require and make a decision based on parking, we should look at everything around it.
I, I agree. I, I think there's probably some issue with that particular event center and. We could look into it and it may open a can of worms. I, I'm not sure how that one was without established, but the staff can look into that for sure.
I also want you to clarify, Mr. Ardmore. I had a hard time when I was reading it and I think I understand it, but just to bounce it off of you. The second change that the applicant is proposing to reduce from two hundred feet to a hundred foot. Is, is that for the off-street parking rule or is that just for the use itself?
It's for both, so it's, it's twofold. It's, one is the, the buffer from, you know, one family, two family, school, church, open space. But also your off, your, your parking.
Then you go into the higher level of parking requirements, which is that it's. That there's somebody there monitoring it whenever the dance hall's in use and.
Yeah, yeah, so yeah, the designated off-street parking is still limited by that either two hundred currently or one hundred if.
So outside two hundred feet, none of those conditions apply to the parking lot of a dance hall.
Right.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Be, would the applicant like to come forward and present your material?
Hello, my name is David Kong and along with my wife June, we own that property on the fourth west and center street. We have lived and worked in the Provo since our college days. And raised our children as well as witnessed the, the transformation of the downtown area. Back in two thousand and ten, we, working with Downtown Alliance and the support from city. Provo City, we're able to transform a, a space on sixty-eight west center street into a restaurant space. So we have really good feelings about downtown and when this property became available. We didn't think a lot about it, but we, we just jumped on it because we liked the space. And working with our architect, we developed several scenario for this. Space usage, usage. Of course, there are challenges and opportunities associated with being a, a small business owner. But we believe this is an opportunity for us to realize our American dream of being, being an owner. And also continue to partner with the city. To transform the downtown area. And also to work with the young people. So with your support, we'd like to implement. Or make this version of our, our dream reality. So. I'm going to ask James and Kenzie to come up and share their ideas about this space.
Hi, we're a little bit nervous, sorry. I am Kenzie Weir. We are the prospective tenants. We're the ones who are wanting to open this. Dance hall. I'm currently a student at BYU studying civil engineering and I work at Spanish Fork and doing traffic engineering for them and this is my husband, James.
Yeah, I'm James. I also go to BYU. I'm a student of information systems there. And I'm on their ballroom dance team and I started doing ballroom dance when I was a weed lab and I'm a huge proponent of ballroom dance. I think everyone should try it. Think it fosters really positive relationships between men and women. And, and we got married eight or so months ago. We met on our missions three years ago. And we got married in the Provo City Center Temple. We had a reception at the library, at the Provo Library. And after we kind of went through the process of getting married, we had a few business ideas. One of which being the one that we kind of wanted to put in this, in this space.
Yeah, so if you've ever been in the Provo Library, you know, they have a huge ballroom and it's beautiful and especially since he is a ballroom dancer. We thought wouldn't it be a great opportunity to create another space like that because they're onto a lot of spaces like that in Provo. The dance hall aspect of it, we're looking to have lessons during the day. Teaching kids, teaching adults. One of the main focuses, so my parents, ever since I started dating James, my parents started taking ballroom dance lessons as well. And they mentioned that there's a big. A large amount of middle-aged people who would enjoy something like that. And so we would love to open, to have classes for adults learning ballroom dance, who have never done it before.
Yeah, I mean, in addition to those types of services, of course, we'd also want to offer social gatherings for people to come and. Ballroom dance together socially. I teach ballroom dance at BYU and we have lots of students that come through every semester. And currently there's no place for them to go in the city to ballroom dance socially. You can go swing dancing or country dancing anywhere you like, but there aren't any spaces to come, social ballroom dance and. And I think that's a pretty big need that Provo doesn't currently fulfill. And so, yeah, that was one aspect of the business that we'd want to put in this facility. We'd also, of course, want to utilize the space to host events and, and use the space as a ballroom for rent. For weddings or receptions or, or other. Corporate events as well. And then depending on the time of day or day of the week or season. And we'd fluctuate what we'd kind of focus on between ballroom dance events and maybe community market type events as well.
We would just wanted to keep it short. Allow for any questions that you might have that we can try and answer.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicants? Either Mr. Kong or, or James and Kenzie?
Yeah, I have a question, so. The, I'm seeing this rendering, is there, is there any attempt in? In the, from your architect or the rendering to try and accommodate more parking spaces? Or is this basically how the current parking layout is?
Come to the microphone.
Yeah, I studied engineering, so I wouldn't say there's no. Possibilities are always there, but I. One way I see maybe having a parking structure and reducing the, the footprint of the building, it would be in the, on one opportunity. But I would say that that's possible, but this is very difficult to implement. So I am. Yeah, having worked in or owned the space on the first west. We had a lot of events there, like the rooftop concerts and such. I don't know how people got there, but. People managed to arrive and stay and have a good time is where I recall. I mean, the positive thing is that Provo is gaining. That good reputation, good vibe and people want to come, which I, I think is a wonderful thing and. I don't understand all the things that young people are thinking, but from my perspective, I think the future looks really good, so. I wish I had a, a magic way of increasing the parking issue, but I really don't have it as a, as a. As a, as a citizen. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Whitlock? Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we will open up for public comment. We will start with a neighborhood chair that I don't think is here. Any neighborhood chair or neighborhood chair representative that's here? Okay, we will give two minutes to each member of the public that would like to speak to this item. When you come forward, you state your name and where you live. Now be nice, don't push each other over as you come up. Now that you know you're not going to get pushed over, you have the courage.
Hi, I'm Rachel Whitlock. I do have a conflict, I guess, Jeff's my husband. But I came to, to listen in and had to say that, you know, Jeff and I live in this area in the neighborhood, just one hundred west, two fifty north. Right by Smith's and love the energy and the new businesses coming in. I do think that parking is probably the main, I mean, I think that's the only concern I've really felt about this proposal. So I think if they can address that, that I would love to see a space like this and I agree that having a place for. Dance classes and for social gathering for, for a ballroom is a great idea and a great area for it. I think there'd be a lot of interest. And a lot of people that would love to see the space like, uh, to see that space used in such a beautiful way, so. I think if they can address the parking issue and if the committee's satisfied that the parking will be. You know, sufficient for what they plan to do with this space, that I think it's a great idea and I support it.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, we will close the public comment portion. And then this is when commissioners will talk about the information we have and ask any follow-up questions. And if we have any questions for someone that's spoken, we will pose our questions to you and invite you to come forward, but. Commissioners, what do you think? I actually have a question. Should I lead off with it? Mr. Ardmore. I don't think we were envisioning the use that was described to us when we hear dance hall. So is there any other classification that the applicant could apply under that would allow them to do what they want to do that doesn't fall under dance hall? I'm just thinking that the Cubby Center offers lessons and. You know, opportunities for that sort of social gathering. So how do, how do they, is there any, are there any options for them that would enable this to not be so much of a fight?
Unfortunately, no. The, the standard, the standard land use code that the city uses is pretty specific. And dance hall, event space, they all fall under that same conditional use.
So it could be a dance studio where they teach lessons, perhaps, but not a dance hall.
Perhaps an educational facility, that would work.
Because it already is. Yeah.
This is a school.
It was, yeah, it was a English learning school.
Giving dance lessons would be schooling.
Yeah, but that, that doesn't take care. Yeah, but that that doesn't take care of their evening, which would be event space. So, okay, thank you.
Can I ask another question?
Yes.
I I'm curious. So I'm just curious for the rationale, like, why not just, would it be possible, maybe the better way to ask this question is like, would it be possible to just to grant the permission but limit the occupants to 76? Or is that not possible?
So the way the code is, you just can't do it, right? And that's why this is, this is not, it might be better to go to like this screen. Because we're not just talking about one building here. We're not just talking about a conditional use permit. That's not what the discussion is about. The discussion is a text ordinance amendment, which applies to this entire area. And that's, that's really where a lot of the concern is. If we're just talking about if if it was already permitted for this site and it's a condition use permit, there might be in this case, there may be conditions that you could place on on the use to mitigate it. But when we're looking at a text amendment to apply to this whole downtown area, that's, I think, a different question. Yes.
So Mr. Whitlock actually nail in the head. Let's imagine that the amendments are approved by the city council. The applicants would have to come back through the process for conditional use permit. And based on the conditional use criteria for dance halls, their occupancy would be limited to 76. For the type of dancing they're doing, that might work, that that low number might work. Typically for dance halls, it's way above that. And that's one of the things that gave us concern. Once it's licensed as a dance hall, it could be any kind of dance hall that could have a much bigger patron demand than 76 people.
Commissioners, what are your concerns? What do you like? What do you, parking? Mr. Knutson said parking. Noise. I worry about noise more in the traditional vision of a dance hall. But any event space would would by nature have the potential to bring additional noise.
Yeah, so this is, I'm just going to share some thoughts out loud is like, the reason why I find this a little tricky is because as Mr. Armar said, is like, this is really about changing the size of this call it exemption area and then changing the buffer within exemption area. But then it's also we're kind of saying, like, I guess, I guess, I think if you look at the original purpose of that is probably around noise as being a very primary concern for why the original code existed. And then maybe parking also, but like, for me, when you look at this area being affected, I was just looking at the the master plan for the downtown area. And this entire area is planned to be, is planned to be commercial. And Center Street is, except for one, I think it's the block on the bottom left is potentially not. I'm looking at, I was looking at the maps. But if you look at sort of the planned use area, it's almost entirely commercial. And I highly doubt those two houses are probably going to stick around for a long time personally. I mean, it's not in the general plan or sorry, in the downtown area plan. And they are pretty much very close to this like vibrant sort of downtown area. So it kind of just, so for me, the noise issue is much less of a concern. Center Street's also very busy. It's a lively, vibrant part of our city, very close to the downtown, sorry, to the Covey Center for the Arts, which also has a lot of noise. And so for me personally, I have less than issue with that. I think parking is a concern. So that's why I asked the 76 occupancy limit question.
I agree. I actually think that the request is in line with the future land use map more than anything else. But the restrictions are there to protect the residences that are there that we also want to preserve in downtown. And so there's the this conflict of one thing versus another. I actually wouldn't have as much of a problem expanding that red square for as far as the language goes, like making it a use that would be conditional. My problem is is also shortening the buffer area. I think that's that's just asking for problems.
Just a question, that would apply for the entire area, right?
Yeah, the whole, the whole green and red area would also have less restrictions. Ms. Kendall?
So I I think that's the main issue because there's unintended consequences and you have to take a change like this to its complete extent of possibilities. So now the entire perimeter of that area becomes a problematic at risk zone for us. So I just don't see how you can change.
We have to remember too, that it's not just that it would allow uses. It also, the additional requirements for noise and parking are also diminished for the whole space. So you no longer have to have a man parking lot or other security measures that were listed in the ordinance. And you have less requirements for that.
So while while I love the idea, I think it's fantastic and it should go somewhere. But this just probably isn't the right property for it.
Mr. South, do you have thoughts on this?
More of the same. I mean, I love the idea. I think if there's a place that we wanted something like this, this would be the area. We're looking for it to go there, like when what comes first? Do we wait till all the residents move out and then we allow something like this? Or then, you know, I mean, what, how do we figure that out? And I get that we are, we are considering repercussions for a larger area. Maybe there's an opportunity to shrink that area. The parking doesn't hold as much weight for me because of some of the points that have already been made. I mean, looking at some of the other uses in that in the downtown area and what we're trying to do in terms of engaging a vibrant downtown core, like this would be really great. And I think we expect that there'll be some of that parking available. The Covey Center, as you pointed out, is clearly using that to facilitate their activities. And so there's an, there's an aspect of why why that isn't available for a smaller venue. Maybe it's just the size of the of the of the proposed expansion here.
So I had some thoughts bouncing around as I was reading this report. One of them was, at what point do economic development interests matter more than desired uses? So how do we balance the, let me quote Mr. Armar's report on page four. He says that the permitted uses in the DT1 zone already allow for great commercial growth. So one of the intents listed in the general plan is is to have commercial growth in the downtown area. Yet another intent in the general plan is that the city should be careful to protect central area neighborhoods. So how do we balance protecting the neighborhoods with also encouraging growth? And how do we know when we should, when change is warranted and when, you know, like, what? I feel like I'm saying, we want commercial growth, we want commercial growth, but not yours. And so how do we, how do we find that balance?
Hi.
Tell everyone who you are.
Keith Maury, I'm the Economic Development Director for the city. It's a sensitive question. I think, you know, from past conversations with me that I consider myself pretty pro development. There's not a whole lot that I don't like to see happen because I think growth and new construction are signs of a healthy, vibrant economy. In this specific example, though, I think I have some concerns because I tend to look at the limited real estate that we have on Center Street, for example, and I think about highest and best use. I love what this couple is proposing. I was on the BYU ballroom backup dance team. I think that's all wonderful. And for what they're, the type of use that they're talking about, maybe it fits in just fine and there's no downtown impact and everybody finds a place to park. But we're not talking about this specific use. We're talking about this general concept in this whole downtown environment. And so I find myself thinking, is that type of use the highest and best use for something on Center Street? And although it's a great idea, I don't know that it's a huge necessarily revenue generator for the city or or something like that. And so I wonder if we shouldn't hold out. That's one of my concerns. I think about the impact of parking in the downtown area where we already have a difficulty with that. And my bigger concern is if we, if we buy what's been proposed tonight as a wonderful prospect in addition to our downtown environment, what happens when they reach the point in their business model where they're not making money, enough money, and they said, we've got to have a dance tonight. Let's have a 300 person dance tonight. Let's make some money. Because, you know, we've got to, we've got to flip this paradigm around a little bit. There's nothing then in the approval that would preclude them from doing that. And then you've got a problem. And I just think you need to think globally about this whole area and think we have several of these types of facilities already in the downtown environment. Do we need another one? I'm not sure that we do. Bill was commenting to me about another location in town where we have one of these where it's kind of degenerated to where we have quite a few of these types of of events that aren't monitored very well. The police end up being there pretty frequently and it's a problem. And so I get, I get worried a little bit about that. Nothing against this business owner or this couple. I think it's a cute prospect. I just don't think it's the highest and best use for this location, probably not the right thing for us to approve, especially since the zone already kind of anticipates all the concerns and the problems I've mentioned, so.
Mr. Maury, in answer to Mr. South's concern, how do you balance that? I guess it was mine too, the preservation of and protection of the downtown housing versus the the commercial growth? How do you, how do you know when you say, well, this is obviously for, I don't know, I haven't looked at the front of those houses. I'm not making any assumptions based on appearance or property owners or anything. What if it's a rental to, you know, it's rundown and eight students are living there? And how do you balance, well, that's probably not going to last very long and it's certainly not an asset to the community in one way, but it is in another. How do you find that balance in preserving housing?
From my perspective, I don't think we have an obligation necessarily or can do that. Someone that owns residential property in a downtown commercial environment should already anticipate you're living in a dense environment where there's going to be a lot of noise and traffic and impact or whatever. I owned a house in South Salt Lake. I mean, well, it's your house actually on very dense area where there was a bus line that went right up and down the street. And you just kind of expected that there was going to be a lot of noise. There was going to be a lot of traffic. There were going to be a lot of people. That's, I moved into that environment because that's kind of what, that was the vibe, right? So I don't know that I feel compelled to try to protect that or try to preserve quiet rural atmospheres for them when that's not what that's ever going to be again. And so the, I'm not as compelled by the impact that this is going to have on those residential units. If they don't anticipate that, there's nothing I can do to help them because they should understand that's kind of the environment that they live in. I'm thinking more holistically about what does this do, kind of that whole area where we already have parking issues downtown? If someone were to have a 200 person, 300 person dance, what does that do? Is that okay? And maybe if we have a special event downtown, that's, that's all right, right? But if if this is a dance hall and that can happen every Friday night, you know, is that, is that okay for us? And I'm just not sure at that location that it's the right thing to do.
So when you have, when you say that, though, if we aren't, if the people who buy homes in the downtown area should just expect that there's noise and then why do we have these additional requirements for buffering them from that noise and traffic?
Well, I think, I mean, I'm probably I think when those codes were drafted, it was an attempt to be sensitive to existing homeowners. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't be sensitive. I guess what I'm saying is you should expect that some of that's going to happen and it's going to be dynamic and some of those things are going to change. But I think those ordinances were put in place to try to find a balance between both, right? We recognize we have people that have historically lived here and if we can protect them, we want to. And I think that's why you have a little bit of a conflict here because people have recognized that those are homes and maybe this is a conflict and.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Kendall?
I just have another question. So if you make the text amendment, that would change the requirements for everybody within that green square also. So that somebody could say, well, I own this property. I'm going to do something different now with my property because now I'm not beholden to some of the rules for that property. Now it's changed, correct? So.
That's correct. Yeah. So say you've got commercial property on the the corner of northeast corner of 200 North and 100 East. You were limited before because that's all the Joaquin neighborhood right there. But with these changes, now you can open up the door to to more activity there. And that's kind of against the expectation, maybe that some of the Joaquin neighbors had.
Right. And so I feel like this is, this is not about a particular one property and its use and whether or not we like it, because we do like it.
Right.
It's about what's, what this text amendment will do for the whole area impact. And if you take each one to its full extent, you don't want that.
Do any of the changes affect uses other than dance halls?
No, these proposed changes would only affect dance halls.
But people could make a dance hall now wherever they want.
Within the square.
Yeah, within the square. Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Not just a dance hall, but an event center.
Right, right. And they're, they're kind of wanting the same according to how we interpret the uses. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a problem that I see with it because it is such a change to that entire area. So it's not about one property even.
It's really hard when there's a proposal that sounds so wonderful. But the the solution for it doesn't sound wonderful, I think, is what it comes down to. We love the idea. We don't like the solution because we know that things aren't always ideal and that they aren't forever sometimes. Mr. South, you look like you have something you want to say.
Just a question, is there a way to change, I mean, let me back up. The buffer is there because of the one house, right? Is that why the text was changed from 200 to 100? Was for that one house that's within the 200 foot? And that's what's pushing this over the entire green and red area, right?
It's both.
Both houses.
They have, there has to be two changes. One, change for decreasing the buffer from 200 feet to 100. But the other one, there were two. The other one is the typical, yeah, yeah.
My, my question is just though is on the 200 to 100. And if it's just for those two houses, I wonder if there's a way to revise that so we're not trying to change that for the entire block here. I mean, the whole area that's in that that code is an exception. Is that, is there any opportunity for that?
I think I get where you're going with that, Mr. South. I think it gets tricky legally as you, as you start to write code and have the attorney review that to make a code so specific to to one property. I think there could be some issue with that.
And it's, this is a tricky solution because we can't just say, we're going to take that block and put it in a new zone because it's already in the same zone. It's just not in the zone of exclusion.
Correct.
Or inclusion.
With the reduced buffer.
Okay, that makes it a little tricky. We're used to just rezoning a section and that's.
The two changes are expanding the green zone.
Yeah.
And then reducing.
I get that. It was just really that 100 to 200. It was just because of those two houses, which appear to be owned by the same company that's on the other pieces. So it's not like there's a single family that's living there and have been for generations. This is some kind of there's, there's longer term changes and, you know, expected, I suspect.
So I'm going to just maybe be a silly person here. But the thing that I'm having a hard time with is that there's uses within this boundary that clearly are doing something similar and without consequence. And, you know, like, and so it's really hard for me to say that somebody else can't. I totally understand why. And I, I agree with the logic that it's, it's not a good idea. But that's the part that's hard for me is that outside of that area, it's already happening. But maybe that's somebody else's fight for another day. Our question is, do we agree with a text amendment that expands the the zone of exclusion or inclusion, however you want to define that? The expanded area and do we agree with reducing the buffer to from 200 feet to 100 feet? And just on that alone, I would say no, I don't agree with the buffer change. And since the two of them come together, we, it's, that's the application, right? We can't say we like half and not the other and move it on that way or can it be amended that way? Just for clarification.
So again, with it being a recommendation to council, you could recommend that they approve a section of it.
And can they modify it or does it have to be reapplied with different language?
So long that it doesn't expand what's being asked for.
Okay.
I think we can continue along the same path.
Mr. Whitlock?
Sorry, not for my water. Yeah, so for what it's worth, I, and I'm curious what other people think, like, sounds like we're not actually that concerned with expanding the area, those blocks, because it's already encompassing uses that are using it for those reasons. And it's already in the, if you look at the plan, it's very similar to the kind of like what you'd expect in a vibrant downtown area. It's more expand, changing the buffer zone for the entire thing that we have concerns with, right?
Yeah, for me, anyway. So if we talk to me, what, what do you think needs to happen? talk to me, what, what do you think needs to happen? Our options are to approve the text amendments as, um, recommended since the staff or as, as applied for, but since the staff doesn't, um, recommend them, we would need to have good, sound reasons why we would approve them. Um, we can continue to get more information, which I don't know we really need. I feel like we have information. Um, and we can forward a recommendation to deny it, which would be what the staff recommends. I would add a fourth one there that we've just brought up, which was perhaps to recommend a modification of the, of the changes to the city council, one but not the other. What do you think?
On a motion?
Sure, if you're ready.
I make a motion that we forward a recommendation for denial to the Provo City Council.
Okay, Ms. Kendall has made a motion to forward a recommendation to the city council to deny, um, item number one. Um, do I have a second?
All second.
Mr. Knutson has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, we will have a vote starting with Mr. Whitlock. You are voting whether you approve or disapprove of the motion to recommend denial. Is that enough negatives in there?
A lot of negatives.
It's totally clear.
Yeah, yay.
You are approving the, the motion to deny.
Okay.
Mr. Knutson?
Aye.
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 I will also vote aye. So the motion to deny, the recommendation to deny will be forwarded to the Provo City Council. Thank you. Thank you all for being here. Guess what? We can't just walk away. What, Mr. South, you wanted to make a motion?
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
All second.
Oh, there's a race. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.